The December 9th, 2024 Eugene City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the city's Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Tonight's meeting does include two public hearings and a public comment period. If you wish to speak and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form available on our Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage, or fill out one of the printed forms available at the entrance to this room. We'll accept those forms until 7:35. The forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and to correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. And just a reminder that the comment period is 90 minutes. It doesn't look like we're going to have trouble getting through all the speakers. But always encourage people to be succinct. And then for those joining the meeting remotely, for the public comment period, you are welcome to email your comments to City Council. And then finally, as a reminder, we have a few rules of conduct, including no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of council. We are seeking to create a very safe and respectful place where people can express their opinions and be heard. And you're always welcome to show your support by waving your hands. And then, you know, if you're not feeling well, we encourage you to at least wear a mask. We have masks at the front of the room. If you're already in the room, distance yourselves in the room. And if you're really not feeling well, we ask you to attend remotely. And then a couple just reminders of this room that we have in a medical emergency, we have an automated external defibrillator right behind Cherish and Natalie there under the big screen. And in the case of if we need to evacuate this building quickly, the two glass doors leading out to the patio and the double doors at the back of the room are the best ways to evacuate the room. And so with that, I call the December 9th, 2024 meeting of the Eugene City Council to order, and I will open the meeting by reading a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuea people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and of honoring native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuea people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuea Ilahi. Kalapuea descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletts Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the And now as our ceremonial matters, we today are honoring Human Rights Day with a proclamation. Whereas the United States approved the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on December 10, 1948, and whereas the United States played a pivotal role in the creation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and whereas the basic human rights addressed in the Universal Declaration include economic, social, and cultural rights, as well as civil and political rights, all considered to be equally important in fostering human dignity and freedom. And whereas the Universal Declaration calls for all people and governments at all levels to promote and respect the rights that it recognizes and provides a standard of achievement for governments throughout the world. And whereas the commitment by the United States to these standards is essential to ensure equality and justice for all, at home and abroad. And whereas Eugene is a human rights city and acknowledges there is more to be done as a city in which the fundamental principles of the Universal Declaration inform and guide the daily lives of everyone in our community to the benefit of all. And whereas, in light of continuing events in our country, as well as in the world, where refugees, immigrants, and minorities have experienced a rash of hate crimes against them, the city of Eugene stands in defense of the human and civil rights of all of its residents. And whereas December 10, 2024, is the 76th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and this anniversary is being celebrated throughout this nation and in nations across the globe. Now therefore, I, Lucy Venice, Mayor of the city of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 10, 2024, to be Human Rights Day in Eugene, Oregon, and encourage all people to work together in the coming year to achieve greater progress in respecting, protecting, and fulfilling the full range of human rights contained in the Universal Declaration for all members of our community. Thank you. And now I see that the city manager has also something to contribute to ceremonial matters.
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to be hard to follow your lead in how you've done proclamations over the years, but I also want to have a ceremonial moment to honor you and Councilor Emily Simple for your years of service, and so would that. Whereas the city manager has no authority to make a proclamation, there's nothing that stops me from making a "you rock" proclamation. Whereas local government officials are a foundation of democracy and provide an essential role in not just fostering a sense of community, but making thoughtful and often difficult decisions on policies and allocation of resources that directly impact the quality of life for all of Eugene. And whereas the last eight years have been blissfully simple and light with just a few tiny bumps. Whereas Zoom became a noun, a verb, an adjective, and a headache, and "you are muted" was added to the consent agenda. And whereas Mayor Lucy Venice and Councilor Emily Simple have stood strong and continued to consistently and tirelessly represent and advocate for the city and their ward, and most especially for those whose voices may not always be heard. And whereas both are strong women who lead with gratitude and heart while tackling hard and complicated topics. And whereas both have demonstrated a deep caring for staff and delivered words of support and kindness along with other actions like cookie deliveries to the Emergency Operations Center and so much more. Now therefore, I, Sarah Madera, City Manager of Eugene, proclaim Mayor Lucy Venice and Councilor Emily Simple to be local government rock stars and emeritus members of Team Eugene, or in more plain words, you're stuck with us. And with that, we have a couple of guests.
That was wonderful. Thank you. That was wonderful. Rock star. Oh my goodness. Oh. This is a picture of me with my youth advisory council. Or some members.
That's great.
That cool? Wow.
Me and the mayor.
Oh, this is great. Team Eugene. Oh, this is wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That is really wonderful. That is wonderful. Okay, I'm going to put this over here. I just want to say, since this is our last Monday night council meeting for the two of us, that it was especially wonderful to acknowledge Human Rights Day on this day. And, you know, I feel a little emotional about it. So thank you for that, and thank you for this acknowledgement. It's been a pleasure to be the mayor of Eugene and grateful to have had the chance to serve. So thank you. Emily, do you want to say anything?
Sure. That's what I've learned over these eight years, is you can talk. It's really been a privilege and honor, as everybody always says, but it's really true. And it's been an adventure. It's fascinating. You learn so much, not too often boring, occasionally brutal, but once in a while it's fun and rewarding. I've really appreciated the support of everybody who got me into this job, and also the people who've supported me during the work. With a big shout out to staff, I couldn't have done it without you. I want everyone to remember to exercise their First Amendment rights to assembly and free speech. No matter what side you're on, it's important that we keep our communication going because that's how we have community and that's how we get things done. So please, get over the pandemic, get together and talk, and then share your circles like Venn diagrams, because that's how we'll know what we're doing. Sidewalks. So then pick up your feet, watch your step, and move onward. Remember to always look for compromises. That can be the way forward. Be bold and innovative. Take care of yourselves. Take care of each other. Be kind. Remember to have fun, and with gratitude and appreciation.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Well done. This is teamwork, working as mayor, council, and staff to do this work. And so it's powerful for us to be part of the team, and it's the hard part about leaving the role. So, okay, with that, we will go on to committee reports and items of interest. So I have a, I think, does anyone have something they, Councilor Clark? Oh, sorry, I've got my screen blocked, so I didn't see you. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to the voices, as I am sure my colleagues will likely do, and say, the manager just did that really, really well, and I feel really awful following you doing that, because I won't do it anywhere near as well. I just want to say that although we have only very, very occasionally disagreed, I appreciate both you and Councilor Simple very much, both for the service you have done our community and all of the work and all of the time. And it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I just wanted to say thank you. I wish you well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Councilor Zelenka. Oh, Councilor Keating, sorry. I'm confused. Councilor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank city manager for the rock-clamation. It was very cool. The women to my left and to my right personify all the best that is public service. Thank you both, Councilor Simple and Mayor Venice, for serving our community. My, I've got a pair of stories. I don't know if they're my favorite stories, but there's something I want to share that illustrates your attention to detail and your passion and enthusiasm for helping others. Both have a passion for helping others, but I'll start with Councilor Simple. We spent a day floating down the McKenzie, or the McKenzie River with our Eugene Water Electric Board partners, and you and I went and had a pint. We found, we went antiquing. We had a day. And it was maybe six months before the holidays, and you were finding the perfect gift for various friends and family members at the antique store. And it made an impact on me, how you are constantly looking to make others happy and whole, and you lead with your heart and you have such intentionality, and that has never left me. And so what a hallmark, not only of a dynamite public servant, but a hallmark of a great human being. Mayor Venice and I were on a Zoom together, running for office in 2020, and I believe Emily Mooney asked us to tell something about ourselves that the community might not know. I might have done some goofy, like I can quote the whole Star Wars trilogy from start to finish nonsense, and the mayor mentioned that she has a bug collection. The mayor, and I've seen this bug collection at your home office. It's a fascinating collection of bugs, and the mayor has found the beauty in the tiniest of insects and the details in the tiniest of creatures. I think of you when I save a spider and take the spider outside. But your attention to detail, your caring for not just all human life, but your caring for animals, and your ability to see the art and love and life in every little detail is so inspiring. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor, for your service. We are all better public servants because of your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilor Zelenka.
So Lucy, every time when you were saying you bug me, you were actually complimenting me all this time. Both of you exemplify what strong leadership and strong women can do in this world, and I really take my hats off to you. You both are good role You both are good role models, and I learned a lot from both of you, and I enjoyed playing with both of you on the city council as much as we could. And Lucy, we've known each other for way before either of us got on council, and so I really cherish that. And Emily, we met on council, but it's been great working with you and knowing you. And I, you know, one of the hallmarks of whether or not you were successful in a, especially in elected position, is whether or not you left the place in a better shape than when you found it. And you can both say, "Yes, I did," because I think you both did it. City's a better place for both of you having served.
Thank you very much. Counselor Evans.
Yeah, you know, I can say my personal goodbyes, you know, outside of the public sphere, but I do have an IGR committee report that I have to give, so. If I interrupt this love fest with a little bit of city business, let's, let me do that, and then later on, we'll get back to, you know, the love fest with Counselor Groves. And, you know, one thing I will say is that we haven't always agreed with each other on everything, but we haven't been disagreeable, except for at least one time, Emily, but, you know, at least you didn't strangle me. And I can appreciate that. So my IGR committee report is, the IGR committee met on Wednesday, December 4th, and adopted the 2025 state priorities and the 2025 state and federal policy documents. Both documents will be shared at the January 27th council work session for discussion and action. The priorities include seeking long-term funding for unhoused shelter and the ability for state funding to pass through directly to cities, seeking funding for Clear Lake Road infrastructure, support increased state investment in behavioral health systems, support increased protections related to threats to public officials, secure authority for local governments to prohibit firearms in public buildings, support improvements to the ground emergency medical transportation system. The IGR committee is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, January 8th, to discuss state and federal legislative updates and congressionally-directed spending requests for fiscal year '26. This will also be Mayor-elect Knudsen's first IGR meeting, with the opportunity to discuss legislative strategy for the 2025 session. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep this relatively short, because I have things I want to say too, but they're more personal in nature and don't need to be said here. But with that, I appreciate both of you and what you have brought to the table. We haven't always agreed, but I actually think our differences are what make this unit stronger. Our differences sometimes calibrate and measure decisions that we make. They have to take care of a broad range of community perspectives and attitudes. And I have appreciated both of you for your willingness to sit down and talk and explain and occasionally change my mind on things. And I think that that's important, that we can have those frank and honest discussions that remain civil. And it has always been a civil discourse. Sometimes it's been passionate, but I think passion is part of what brings us all to office. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I respect both of you very much. I'm going to miss you. Take care.
Thank you very much. Counselor Yeh.
Thank you. And, you know, I've already had a chance to tell the mayor how much I appreciate her, and so I'm going to talk to Emily today. I don't think I've told you this, but when I first started on council, you were one of the first people I ended up talking with. And as another woman in leadership, it meant a lot to me to be able to talk to you and hear from you. And at the time, I was having a lot of, you know, is this, am I going to be able to do this? A lot of imposter syndrome. And you invited me, we had a beer and some pizza. And it made all the difference, just for you to show up as an authentic, down-to-earth, you know, this is going to be great, we are going to do this together, it's a team, no matter what happens, you know, we're there for each other. And I just took a deep breath in it, and I don't think I've told you that, but I wanted you to know that how much just you as a person made a difference.
Thank you. I do remember when you started, and I say, "Yay, yay, let's go do this." So I'm glad you remember too. Thank you. Counselor Leach.
Thank you. I mean, similarly to Jen, I came on two years ago, I was appointed, I was scared out of my mind, I didn't think I knew what I was doing, and it was, I mean, all of you together that made me feel comfortable, but, and particularly Emily brought some humor, levity to certain, you know, serious, serious topics that we have to confront. And Mayor, you've been such an amazing mentor to me through this process. I'm going to miss you dearly. So, without getting emotional, I also have an update from the Human Rights Commission, and it is an invitation to our community. The Human Rights Commission's Homelessness and Poverty Work Group is hosting a candlelight vigil for Homeless Persons Remembrance Day on December 21st. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a memorial and an outreach event on the longest night of the year to commemorate and honor the passing of members in our community who are experiencing homelessness at the time of their passing. So come with us to gather, to reflect, and acknowledge the lives of these members of our community. So for more information, you can find that on our website. And again, thank you all for joining us, and thank you both. 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Oh, where? That is at the Park Blocks. Yes, Park Blocks.
Okay, thank you all for so many, so many kind and funny and thoughtful words. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you, and really something I treasure. And also for the formal reports. So appreciate that we actually got some work done in the midst of all of that. Thank you for keeping us on track. And with that, I will turn it over to Council President to put the consent calendar motion on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar 1.
Second.
All in favor, or well, please vote. Let's see, register your votes. And that looks like that passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we have Consent Calendar 2.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve items on Consent Calendar 2.
Second.
Please register your votes. And that passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to a public hearing and action resolution adopting the City of Eugene's supplemental budget, and I will turn to the city manager to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing provides an opportunity for the council to receive public input on the City of Eugene's third supplemental budget for the 2023 through 2025 biennium. Supplemental budgets are an opportunity to make unforeseen changes to the adopted budget for that budget period and realize new revenue that was not included in the original budget. This is the City of Eugene's first biennial budget cycle and our first mid-biennium December supplemental budget. As we're not reconciling audit adjustments, including marginal beginning working capital, this December supplemental budget is much smaller than in prior years. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenue, authorizes other unanticipated changes in legal appropriations, aligns funding with previous council actions, and includes some one-time funding for strategic initiatives. Approval is requested tonight, oh, I'm sorry. You have the public hearing, and then after that, approval is requested tonight to allow for necessary legal appropriations, and staff are here and available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, I now open the public hearing, and we'll turn to staff to, do we have a list of speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker for this first item, and that speaker is John Borowski. John Borowski, if you'd like to come up.
Well, welcome back for this annual ritual.
Thank you, Mayor and city council city manager. John Borowski, Ward 3, speaking on the supplemental budget for the City of Eugene. As the city manager mentioned, this is a kind of a smaller housekeeping type of supplemental budget usually. The December supplemental budget is the one where most of the meat is at. So it's a light diet for me this evening. A couple of things that I do want to bring your attention to is the fact that the rubber's hitting the road in this supplemental budget on some council actions and priorities that you've taken. Earlier this year, you amended the code that allowed the stormwater funds to be used for parks maintenance. So this is where that actually happens. $1.1 million that is in the stormwater fund is going to be reallocated to use to offset some general fund priorities in public works in parks. Another one of the actions that you gave direction to the city manager on was the sale of certain properties that the City of Eugene owned to the Urban Renewal Agency. Actually, that money came in a little bit higher than was anticipated. There's $1.3 million that's being put towards the city's general fund from the Urban Renewal Agency. It was estimated it was going to be about $850,000, but the appraised values came in a little bit higher. So these are strategies that the city manager and the finance staff have used to help to try and shore up the budget in these times of diminishing revenue, well, revenues that aren't keeping pace with expenses. This is kind of looking under all of the rocks and turning things over to try and balance this budget. You have a lot of work yet to do on this. This is just a small part of the problem that you guys will be facing in the coming months, but I just wanted to put out there that these are kind of the, like I said, the money is now being shifted. You guys gave direction to do this and gave the city manager the authority to do it, and if you adopt this tonight, the money's going to get moved. So thank you.
Thank you, John. If you'd like to remain seated, you may.
So I will now close the public hearing, and are there any questions or comments from council? And with that, I turn to Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt a resolution adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the City of Eugene for the biennium, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
Please register your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I now close the December 9, 2024 city council meeting and call the December 9, 2024 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency to order. And we have an action, here, public hearing and action resolution adopting the Urban Renewal Agency supplemental budget. And again, I will turn to the agency director to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't repeat all of the same information, so I'll just limit it. A lot of it is the same. This public hearing provides an opportunity for the agency board to receive public input on the Urban Renewal Agency's third supplemental budget for the 2023 through 2025 biennium. The supplemental budget recognizes the budget actions necessary to implement council and agency board direction. Approval is requested tonight to allow for necessary legal appropriations, and staff are available for questions.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing, and I'm assuming that we just have one person to testify?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker for this hearing.
All right. And so we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Again, John Borowski, for the record. Speaking of the supplemental budget, I kind of talked about the fact that the Urban Renewal Agency did some property transfers. So with my remaining 2 minutes and 20 seconds, I would also like to echo the gratitude to Mayor Venice and Counselor Simple. Over the years, I've had the opportunity to serve on several boards and commissions and interact with these fine folks. You guys have been a great asset to this community. Counselor Simple is my McKenzie watershed buddy, and I really enjoyed those times. On another note, I would just like to say, as the board chair of the Eugene Chamber of Commerce, I'd also like to thank you guys for the work over the years engaging with our business community. I think that we're in the strongest place ever between the council and our business community and the chamber. I think there's a really good example of that with the tree lighting that we had this last week. And so, again, from the business community and for myself, thank you all for what you've done.
Thank you.
Is there anything John hasn't done?
Thank you very much. And with that, I close the public hearing. And again, any questions or comments from the agency board? So I'll turn to the agency president.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve a resolution adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the Urban Renewal Agency and, excuse me, let me start over, Mayor. Right. Move to approve a resolution adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene for the biennium, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
All right, please register your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I just also want to thank you, John, for your persistence and your thoroughness and your thoughtfulness in coming year after year to testify at this particular juncture and all of the other work that you've done in the community. It's really been a pleasure to work with you. I now close the December 9 meeting of 2024, meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, and call the December 9, 2024 Eugene City Council meeting back to order. And so the next item on the council's agenda is possible action appointments to the Toxics Board, and I will turn to Council President to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will refrain from nominating Counselor Simple and Mayor Venice to the Toxics Board. I'm going to do these one at a time, so it'll be two different votes, Mayor. Move to appoint Noemi S. Torres to the Toxics Board, beginning December 10, 2024, to fill an unexpired term, ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, well, please register your votes, and you've already done that, and that, she passes unanimously, so congratulations, Noemi. And next?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to appoint Tom Stedman to the Toxics Board, beginning December 10, 2024, to fill an unexpired term, ending June 30, 2027.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All right, please register your votes. And Tom also approved unanimously, so thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor, for that. And with that, we are finished with our business, and we can move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official. And again, I will turn to staff to share the list and total number of speakers that signed up by 7:35.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six speakers this evening. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speaker this evening is Lynn Woodrich, followed by Sam Schwartz.
My name's Lynn Woodrich. I'm the active Bethel community co-chair. I've lived in the Bethel area, I'm kidding, for over 30 years. I do this every time. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. Thank you for hearing us and withdrawing the zoning verification decision. I appreciate that you all support our concerns. I do this every time. Okay. The public comment period is only until December 17th. We're in the process of gathering letters to present to Jeff, asking him to withdraw the zoning verification permanently. The 90 days for the final decision is up on January 16th. I see that you've, oh, then also, I wanted to mention that Bethel Drive is eating sidewalks, and they didn't know anything about it. What's the deal? I see that you've proposed work session on the agenda for the USD Clean Fuels Transloading Project, but I don't see anything for the public health development standards. It's been over a year now that you unanimously agree this needs to be done. Please hurry to finalize these standards for at agree this needs to be done. Please hurry to finalize these standards for at least the Bethel and Trainsong neighborhoods. Here we go again. So we might be saddled with another JH Baxter Business Center area. I also see a work session proposed for scrap metal sales, but no public health development standards. Why? Another thing you can do now to help with the unhoused problems are to enact a no panda handling ordinance for Eugene. And why are you failing to enforce illegal camping codes on Highway 99 from Roosevelt to Beltline? Bethel needs a police substation on Highway 99 now. It doesn't need to be fancy. The city hired a downtown incident commander in 2023 to focus on public safety and cleanliness. Oh, dear. Ensuring appropriate police presence and coordinating resources. I'm sorry. Bethel needs this. Community safety patrol payroll taxes need to support Bethel, too. I did it. Anyway, I'll miss you guys. And I appreciate all your support. And I'll probably cry whenever anyone leaves. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speakers are Sam Schwartz, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sam Schwartz. I recently — well, a couple of months ago, I got my PhD in computer science from the University of Oregon, and I also happen to be a resident of Ward One. And thank you so much for, you know, being my councilwoman for many years. I'm here to talk to you today — this is my first-ever council meeting, and I did not realize there would be — I guess I knew it, but these exits. So thank you for your service. I'm here today, though, to talk about maybe a less sexy topic, which is cybersecurity. I also happen to be one of Governor Kotek's appointees to a board that helps oversee many of the websites in the state of Oregon. And I've been on that board for about a year or so now. And as I've been thinking, you know, I'm not an expert in many things, but I do have a PhD in computer science. And I've been thinking, what are some of the questions that if I were a layperson, I would want to, you know, ask to staff, particularly with these risk areas? So I've got a bunch, but I want to address just four that I think would be appropriate for this council. There are four major risk areas generally associated with IT failure, whether it's due to unintentional operational failures or intentional cyber attack. And those four areas are reputational risks, financial loss, risk of data loss, and risk of system downtimes. And so in light of the digital assets that are under your purview, whatever board you're at, you know, there's a question of how do we think about mitigating these risks? So regarding reputational risks, you know, what is a plan to respond to a major cybersecurity attack or system failure? Who's the contact person for the press? Who contacts this board? Regarding financial risk, how do we shut down, you know, financial transfers from one place to another really fast? What's in place to do that? Regarding data loss, are there backups in place somewhere? And in terms of system downtime, if, you know, the big one hits and, you know, all our infrastructure were to, you know, totally be obliterated in a big earthquake, how long would it take us to get all of our systems back online? So these are just a few questions to think about, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Sam. Our next speakers are Bill O'Brien, followed by Wayne Martin.
Good evening. I came down here — well, first thing is, ladies here, they're trying to save the neighborhood. And I hope you move that Trainsong Biofuel Depot, move it somewhere else. Get it out of that area. I know you want to do that, so that hopefully that's done and finished. Hopefully it will happen. The other thing is, I was annoyed watching the news about two nights ago in KVal and KZI where they had Barton over there. People, you know, about permitting process. And I saw you have a very cordial relationship with him and his group. You don't need tickets. I mean, they're doing — they're feeding people. And with this budget that Governor is proposing, 1.8 — what is it, 1.8 billion? For substance abuse homelessness, I hope it's going fully used. Because like Whitebird, 12th Street, that front office, they painted the building, they did how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of renovation. Closing. I don't know if they're going to sell it. I don't know if they're going to build a high-rise there. Really don't know where they get their money from. I mean, they're laying off staff, you know, like cahoots, two vans to cover the whole city. I mean, I called them up quite a bit. And, you know, it's like, one given day, I saw a man sprawled out on the sidewalk on 3rd Street. This went on for 24 hours. He was out on the sidewalk, out. And finally, about 8 o'clock at night, I went up to him. I said, "Would you like some coffee? Would you like some food?" You know? In that 24-hour period, I saw a guy at Jackson's that had cognitive issues. He didn't know how to put relish on a hot dog and ketchup. He did not even know how to pay for it. So I ended up buying him his hot dog. Then I go up the street on a bicycle, and I see a man in his underwear. You know, we talk about — I say, "You look pretty bad," you know? I mean, he says, "Is that stuff bad for you?"
Thank you, Bill. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Wayne Martin, followed by Sarah Boom.
I have a handout, and it goes this way, according to your names. I'd like you to have it now. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Sorry you can't read what I'm trying to refer to. As you have heard, we've been in kind of a dialogue with people who can let us, that is, the people — it's called neighbors feeding neighbors, who can allow us to continue to do what we're doing. I have here something that you can receive that explains, that gives you an opportunity to read the letters that I have written to both Rich Hoi and Kelly Shadwick. And to each of those letters in which I went into some detail, I did not receive an answer. Now, I've seen statements by various city officials, including police, that the city has done everything they can, and we have not responded. I'm sorry. We have. What we do is to provide meals, beverages, lunches, rides, medical care, all of the above. There were times when, up until August, we had the occasion to need a vehicle. So did medical, Opportunity Medical. We don't do that anymore. We are now serving on the sidewalk, not blocking the sidewalk. And so I urge you, if you would, to refrain from implementing any further actions. And I want to say this final word. I appreciate the Eugene police —
Thank you, Wayne. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Sarah Boom, followed by Misty Bowman.
Hi, my name is Sarah Boom, and I am a resident of Ward Seven. I'm here today because I am concerned for you. You seem to think that you are in charge of the city. It's true that you do control the budget, but the actual implementation of the law seems out of your hands. You claim to want to reduce the amount of violence in Eugene, yet you allow the very people you bankrolled to do violence. The police are stealing from you. They demand huge salaries and then turn around and harm the most vulnerable members of our community. They misappropriate funds you label for other purposes. They don't even come when you, yes, you, call them. The tail is wagging the dog. You are the elected representatives of the citizens of Eugene. The people have vested their power in you. You, in turn, have given that power again and again to unelected bullies who run rampant over you and me. I ask you only to take back that power for yourselves. Cut the police budget as much as you think you can, and then cut what's left in half. I know that they will threaten you. I know that they'll throw a fit and try to pick on you, but I think that you can rise above that. Violence is not the end-all, be-all of power. You have the real power. Stop the sweeps.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next and final speaker is Misty Bowman.
Good evening. My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward Seven. I'm a Dark Sky International advocate, and I'm here to discuss light pollution. Exciting things have happened in Oregon since I started coming to council meetings in June. Cave National Monument and Preserve is now Oregon's second Dark Sky International-approved park. Oregon also has our first Dark Sky International-approved community, Antelope Oregon. Not only that, but Sisters Oregon is pressing forward on a Dark Sky International application as well. I don't want Eugene to be left behind while the rest of Oregon reclaims their dark skies. So let me raise yet another reason to revise and enforce our outdoor lighting standards: light trespassing. Like light pollution, light trespassing is omnipresent in cities but goes woefully unaddressed. Light trespassing is exactly what it sounds like. It's when unwanted light from one property shines unforgivingly onto another property. All over the city, businesses and street lights light trespass onto other businesses and residential areas. What's more, this creates cascading effects. Businesses know that humans are drawn to light as moss are to a flame, so they get bright, shining lights for all the world to see. Then other businesses are forced to compete with these lights and get big, brilliant lights themselves. This is unhealthy for our environment, decreases neighborhood livability, and wastes money both public and private. This could be prevented by a properly enforced lighting ordinance in putting a ceiling on light pollution the same way there are ceilings on noise and air pollution in our city. I would say that the enforcement of our outdoor lighting standards in the past 20 years has been a disaster, but that wouldn't quite fit. See, disaster comes from the old Italian word, disastro, or ill-starred. If an ill-starred event happened in Eugene, would we even see those stars? I ask once again for the city council to revise and enforce the outdoor lighting standards to a new ordinance guided by Dark Sky International's five principles of responsible outdoor lighting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Misty. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much. This was a small turnout for public comment, and it was varied. So I appreciate all of the comments that came. And Lynn, thank you very much for your emotional presentation today. And I did just want to say that we did have a letter from Alyssa Hunter saying that there's community engagement on the public health standards that would begin in January. So that process is, you know, it is beginning, and you can look forward to hearing more about that. So it hasn't been forgotten. And I know it's taken a while to get there, but it's coming. And Wayne, I want to thank you for coming and speaking. I've known you really from the very first, I think, when I was first running for office. And we've had many conversations. And I would like to see a productive conversation about the alternatives for neighbors feeding neighbors. So — and let's see, any other — I guess I'll open it up to councillor. Any councillors with comments? All right, councillor Keating.
Mayor, I share your enthusiasm for reaching a mutually beneficial agreement. I would ask maybe the city manager, has there been a mediation effort to bring the neighbors feeding neighbors and the city together? And if not, is that something we could explore?
Yeah, I believe that — I don't think there's been a formal mediation, as most people would think of that topic. There's been a number of meetings, and we do have staff that connect. But we've had some conversations today about how we might approach that.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, Sam Schwartz, congratulations on your gubernatorial appointment in regards to cybersecurity. Excellent. Congratulations. I could listen to you on NPR all day long. Like, you may have studied computer science, but there's certain — I'm an old radio guy, and I was fascinated by your public testimony tonight. And it's encouraged me to consider potential work session around potential cyber attacks or IT failure. So, city manager, I don't know if I would need to submit that, or if I can just request that, or if that's on the docket, even better.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we talked about this in our one-on-one this week.
Right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone who spoke tonight. City manager, I'm interested in a dialogue on — with neighbors helping neighbors as well, but I ask that we not lose sight of the impact on the neighborhood there. We've been hearing repeatedly, and I've been down and I've seen it myself, the impacts that they are feeling from this. So that's got to be in the discussion as well. And I would appreciate if we keep that as a top issue, as well as we're trying to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Semple.
Mike?
There you go. The red light. I'm official now. It's really dark outside. We've got two weeks, and it's going to start to get lighter. And two weeks after that, you can all come back here and talk to the new council. I've really been mostly delighted, sometimes tired, but it's been really great to listen to Public Forum all these years. I remember when I used to come to Public Forum, and that's kind of why I'm here now. So the light's coming back. Keep your hopes alive, and celebrate whatever you like to celebrate, including yourself and each other.
Thank you. That is a lovely note for us to close on. I think if there are no other comments, thank you all for coming, and we are adjourned.